Did you see it?
I haven't seen it.
Oh, you haven't seen it? That there's a... It's the... I got in the mail today.
Something I thought said it was wrong.
Yeah, I think, here's what's wrong. Down here reading this is wrong. But if you find out where you're at here, it's simple. You should've gotten it in the mail today.
I probably did.
Yeah.
I haven't got to make it. So how do you know here, when does my recycle?
Okay, well, you find out what yours is. Is yours here? So your Tuesday a week. So a week is...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm Monday.
You don't worry about these dates. Okay, so your Tuesday a week. But Tuesday, a week is in the blue. So yours will be on Tuesday. So yours was last week and it's gonna be next week. Tuesday, choosing...
Mine's always...
It's gonna be different. Yeah.
As of...
Really, it's Thursday. Yeah. Yeah. But you didn't get this till today.
No.
You put it out last week.
Absolutely.
You can't put it out today.
Absolutely.
They won't, they won't take it. Or did they? Well, maybe because this hasn't come out yet. Yeah, that's what this is this. They wanted to pick it up for a recycle today.
Oh, they did.
Okay, they would've taken it.
From next Monday.
Yeah. You gotta put, you have, you said your pickup was on Monday. So you'll have to do the recycle on the separate day. And just mine comes on the same day.
Yeah.
Well, because I think it's already. We're good.
I don't have much anywhere.
Isn't this... But what... They wouldn't take glass, but it said in the brochure takes glass. Okay. Look at it. And I, I thought they said no more glass. I thought it was already. Quit putting glass in, didn't they say quit putting glass in?
That's what I thought.
The ladies say.
That's what I thought.
I call the Norton City Council Committee work session for Monday, August 19th, 2019, to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silent reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated, please. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Gaynor.
Here.
Mr. McLean.
Here.
Mr. Carrick.
Here.
Mr. Towesley.
Here.
Ms. Whipke.
Here.
Mr. Pilat.
Here.
Mr. Kernan.
Here.
Under public comments, Michael Sims.
My name is Michael Sims. I am the attorney for Barbara Rhodes Storage. At this time, I would request that you allow me to hold my comments until we get to sections I and J of the agenda.
We can do that. Anyone can speak during those sections, so.
Thank you very much.
Debra Pfeifer.
Back again. I have a question about the legislation you're going to pass on the multi-use district. I read the addendum and then I looked up sections 1296 and 1297 in the ordinances. And so I'm trying to understand what this means in terms to the citizens, you know, whose homes and properties are around it. Does that mean that you guys will get, someone will approach you now that wants to say to develop the golf course? And it will go to the planning commission? And then we can come in, chat to the people at the planning commission, and then they pass it or do not pass it? Then it comes back to you and there will be an open meeting at, at the council? Or is it, you know, is it just something that's going to be given to you guys? You guys are going to look at it and say yes or no, and it moves forward? So I guess the neighbors are kind of, you know, wondering what this means to us. You know, I don't really understand the rules of your ordinances, so.
So, and Mr. Markey can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is, is that the process remains the same and it goes through the planning commission. The only difference that this piece, new piece of legislation makes is that council ultimately, it does come back to us. And we are able to place restrictions to okay it, not okay it, things of that nature. Justin, is that right? Mr. Markey, is that right?
All development within the multi-use district has to be approved by council, by a vote.
Is there a public hearing again?
It would be a normal council process, so that would be...
Public comment, just like any...
I mean, but will we be notified and therefore everybody, you know, on the whose properties touch? Is that going to go through that whole? Do you know what I'm saying?
I don't think so.
When it goes to planning, would they?
You're asking, once it comes to council, there'd be a formal notice with a formal hearing date where people are notified? And I'd have to check on that. I don't know offhand.
But we will check into that and I'll, I'll get you an answer to that question. Okay? John Pfeifer.
Just a couple of things. I went through this proposal.
Pull that, pull it, John, pull that microphone up there, so there we go. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
I kind of perused this amendment to the mud ordinance or zoning ordinance, and I just, I mean, it, it looks like it, it can help the situation that we seem to be concerned about as, as citizens with regard to development or redevelopment of the golf course. But I was wondering, reading through this, it seems like the developer comes in and he pays his 1,200-plus dollars and submit plan, submits plans and so forth. It goes through a whole bunch of stuff internally in the city, and then it appears on council's desk. And council can make a decision, yes, no, or do this, or I'm not sure what decisions you can make, or if you can just say, no, we don't want this done. You know, to me, that could open up a can of worms because the guy's already paid his money and done a bunch of stuff. And the, what I read, or what I thought I read, doesn't necessarily address what remedies you guys do have and what the remedies that you do have, how might that affect the person that's trying to get this stuff through? So that was a concern I had. The other thing I was concerned about is that the, the actual proposal to change the zoning of the golf course to, to mud. I think you've heard a lot of comments from the citizenry, hopefully a lot, regarding concerns about this whole thing. And the basic concern is why it's going to be a mud district in the first place. And it seems as though, as talking to various people, administration-wise, plus, you know, the citizens, that nobody really under, has seen anything concrete. There are no site plans, there are no anything. Nobody's even willing to say that somebody's even purchased this. And my concern is, or I guess the big question I would like answered is, why do you want to change it to a mud district? You know, why isn't there, if some of the rumors are true, and they're talking about essentially a residential development in there, then why would you go to a mud district in the first place? You know, I mean, maybe if you were anticipating something other than that, more of a business-type environment, I could see that. But then, my concern is, is the golf course is in the middle of a residential district. It's heavily, heavy-duty residential. You know, right now, water and sewer and stuff are going on up and down Cleveland Maslin Road and around the center of town and so forth. To me, it seems like because that's happening, there could be a lot of potential for, for the development up there, you know, which is certainly everybody in the community would like that type of development. But to stick something like that, or potentially stick like, something like that in the middle of a residential district, just doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense to me, and a lot of other people, too. So if, I guess the concern is, is if there is mostly a residential district that probably is going in there that nobody knows, seems to know about, then if what the developer wants to do is slightly beyond residential-type environment, or residential-type zoning, then why can't a special case be given to that person? Now, whether it's SPDs like people used to hate around here, or just a variance, or I'm, it would seem to me that there is something available that could be done, rather than just saying, make this a multiple-use district and we'll see what happens. Because it, to me, that's just really dangerous, doing something like that in the middle of a residential district. Admittedly, if this amendment goes through that you folks are proposing, where you have a say-so in the event, certainly that is a good thing, I think. You know, it can help the situation. But still, if it doesn't need to be, something as all-encompassing as multiple-use district, you know, why does it have to be? You know, why does whomever want to make it a multiple-use district? I guess that's the question. I think, I think if everybody knew the reason behind that, maybe it would help us better understand what's going on. Not necessarily that we would agree with it, but at least we might have a, an understanding. Because right now, everything is just, I mean, I've approached different people and talked to them, and everything is a rumor. Everything is a rumor. You know, I guess maybe because it's a real estate deal, but still, somebody's requesting the zoning. And there's this, you know, we're kind of in limbo and don't know what's coming or going. So, anyway, those are my thoughts, and I hope you would at least think about them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Nice-Winter.
Good evening. I'm here regarding the water and sewer petition for Wadsworth Road for, I'm a business owner there and representing some other business owners, and want to let you know that I'm here if you have any questions when you get to that. And it is something that we've been asking for, for about three and a half years now, so.
Excuse me. Could you speak up?
Yes. Is that better? I said, I'm Diane Nice-Winter. I own Diane's Thrift Shop on Wadsworth Road, and I'm here representing other businesses with us there for the water and sewer petition on Wadsworth Road that we've been requesting for, going on several years now. And I just want to let you know that I'm here to answer any questions on our behalf if you have any questions or anything I can help with.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Tanya Vanderbein.
So I have a couple of questions regarding, I guess, one regarding the agenda tonight with regards to the council rules amendments that you've put forth regarding changes that we've heard you speak about before, basically having everything done on the Monday. Council, regular work session meetings before council meetings. At least, that's my understanding. And in light of that proposal that's being put forth, and in light of other meetings that I've attended, specifically July 11th, 2019, which was a special council meeting in which my councilman, Mr. Towesley, put to the floor to allow some of us residents to speak that night. Your charter currently states that during special council meetings, public comments will not be permitted during special council meetings unless approved by a majority vote of the quorum of council. I guess I'm asking that in, since you're looking to change all of this, I think to make it maybe more efficient is my thought behind why you think that's a good idea, that that needs to be changed as well. Council is, council, city council is to represent the citizens of Norton and hear the things that we have to say. And I am of the opinion that there is no circumstance where a resident should not be allowed to speak at any function that you guys meet at. So I'm asking that you take that under consideration. My second thing is, I want to ask about the house on Union Street that Michael and I were told weeks and weeks and weeks ago would be down, tore down by the end of July. It still stands. Since that time, there's been drug activity and arrests. There's been a gentleman living in the home. I walk in that neighborhood, other women walk in that neighborhood, early in the morning, late in the evening, with our dogs, young children. I just want to know what the status of it is. We were told the house would be torn down, the area around it would be cleared so that it was visible and safe. That's not happened, and the house still stands, so I'd like to know what the status of that is.
I think the Board of Control approved the money to have it torn down, so it should be, if it's not scheduled, it should be pretty quick. There had to be a Board of Control meeting in order to approve the money to expend, to tear it down. But that's, that's been done, is my understanding, a couple of weeks ago.
And so what's the next step?
So the Board of Control, because the expense was over $5,000 and the contract had to be approved by the Board of Control, has been approved and sent to the contractor. It's scheduled for demolition when he gets time. It has been awarded and set for demolition.
Okay.
Is part of the demolition cleaning the lot up?
The demolition will be done in accordance with our codified ordinances, which includes landscaping, any concrete removal, et cetera.
Okay.
My third thing. I've been in front of council now for many weeks in a row, and I've asked repeatedly for some guidance, for help. I've had some of you out to my home to come to some kind of a resolution to fix the mess left by KDA, building their building and the, and the mess that was cleaned up in there. I was told to call Barberton because it's Barberton's problem. I called Barberton, Barberton says it's Norton's problem. I talked to you guys about it. Everybody says, well, you know, we'll look into it. Michael and I have talked to Mr. Fowler. He, you know, expressed trying to get some hills and get some of that brush taken out there. Another conversation was that KDA really is responsible. I mean, I guess at this point, I don't care who's responsible. I just want it, I want a resolution to it. And I guess I'm asking city council, what you propose, I do, to make that happen. Because I feel like I've addressed and addressed and addressed and nothing gets done.
I mean, I'm not going to give you legal advice as to what you need to do.
On that, asking for legal advice.
So, I mean, I, I looked it up. I've told you, it's, the property is owned by the city of Barberton. It's their property, it's their mess, they need to clean it up.
And I have asked Barberton for permission, and I have not received any permission for us to do any improvements on their property.
Okay. My last thing is regarding the real estate purchase and sales agreement with Clinton Aluminum. I have some questions about that. I obviously am not an attorney. I, I understand things to the best of my ability as I read through this, this sales agreement. What I don't see in the sales agreement is any stipulations that the city imposed for setbacks, boundaries, things of that nature. With that being said, there is an exhibit in the sales agreement that has a picture of the, of the parcels in question. This is it. The contract states that these two parcels is what's been sold to Clinton Aluminum, 34.6 acres, I believe. This is also in red, though, these two parcels over here. And I'm just wondering what that is referring to, since this is part of the exhibit in the sales agreement? Because there's reference in the purchase and sales agreement about split, the parties acknowledge that a split constellation or replat is required in order to separate the property. I'm not really sure that I understand completely what I'm reading, but my layman's understanding is that something's going on then with them as well, with those other two parcels. So I would like somebody to explain to me what, what's going on with that. I'd like to know why there's no, after all the conversations that we've had, which have gone on for months now, months, why that wasn't taken into consideration? And if it was, what council did to make that happen? I want to express my frustration with all of you, because this process for Michael and I began on March 12th of 2019, when we were notified about the rezoning of the property behind us to Light Industry. I have attended every council meeting since that time except one, and I've been repeatedly told, there's no plans, nothing's in the works. I've expressed that I am in no way trying to, what's the word I'm looking for? Screw up any deal that you guys might have with, with a potential business owner. But this was known. Your, your planning commissions had the site plans for Clinton Aluminum for months. They've been sitting on them. Mr. Fowler wrote a letter to Clinton Aluminum on May 1st, but meetings after that, which are on video, state clearly that there are no plans. I just asked for transparency. I wanted to know what was going on in my community. And I was repeatedly told, we have, we have no, there's no business, there's no plans for this. And, and then this has happened. And I just find it, I want you all to understand that from where I stand, you have a special council meeting on July 11th. This contract with Clinton Aluminum is signed on July 11th by Mr. Fowler, who was not at the meeting that night. Clinton Aluminum signed it the next day. It just appears to be like you tried to push it through. And I'm frustrated with that, because I just wanted to be a part of the conversation, to make sure that the property owners back there are protected. And I stand here and I grimace as I listen to you talk about what the process is regarding the mud district, site plans. Will you be able to be a part of that process? My answer to you is no. I feel like I'm getting the runaround. But more importantly, I'm, I'm not trying to accuse, I know that you guys all have a business to do. I, I'm just extremely frustrated. Mr. Gaynor sat in many meetings and said this was good for the city, this is prosperity to Norton, you all agreed. Yet Clinton Aluminum got a 15-year tax abatement for 100%. So all you're going to collect is the payroll tax on the approximately 120 employees that Clinton Aluminum have. How does that benefit the city of Norton when you're not collecting property taxes?
Well, we're not collecting anything on it now, at all.
No, you're not. But this was supposed to bring prosperity to the city, so...
Some thing's better than nothing. Mr. Fowler?
Number one, she has made several statements that are outright lies.
Okay.
And, and I'm, I'm actually done sitting here and listening to the lies. Number one, they did not get 100% of tax abatement. The tax abatement has yet to be approved by the city council.
Well, that was another question.
Number one. Number two, Clinton Aluminum, we had nothing from Clinton Aluminum till after July 7th, 8th. So to sit here and say that we had an agreement and that was in planning commission is a lie.
I didn't say that...
That is an outright lie.
I did not say that you had an agreement. I said you...
She said that the plans were at planning commission in March. That is a lie.
That's not what I said. I said the planning commission has had their hands on the site plans for weeks. You all have known...
That's, that is not true. That is an outright lie.
As evidenced by the letter that you sent them on May 1st, which I have a copy of. And again, I understand that you're doing business. I get it.
Yeah.
But be transparent.
Yeah.
And my time is up, I'm sure.
It is, but that's okay.
I'm frustrated. Before I go, can somebody please explain to me what the intent is with this map and these two parcels?
Justin, do you know, or should, can we get her an answer to that?
Yeah, the, the lower parcels are the, so the Metro Parks properties are a lower portion of proper, parcels and the upper portion, portion of parcels, the ones that are closer to your property. The lower portion, those two parcels that are at the bottom there.
Yes.
Those are being combined and then potentially split off. So the, if the sale goes through, which the sale has not gone through yet, if the sale goes through, then they would combine those lower parcels and then split off 34 acres from it. And that's all that's saying. It has nothing to do with the ones up there. That's just a map that has all the parcels highlighted on them. So it has nothing to do with the parcels that you...
But only four of the five parcels are highlighted, which is why I asked that question.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but...
Are these squares? These squares right here that are marked out on this map, is that?
The cross-hatched area, yes.
Yes. Is that land that not part of the sale?
No, that's the land that's, that's potentially being sold.
That is the land...
That is the land that's potentially being sold. That's correct.
So again, that hints my frustration, because there's nothing in any of this documentation for boundaries, setbacks, barriers, to protect the people that live around this park.
Under Committee of the Whole, acknowledged the budget reports of July 2019. They are acknowledged. Planning Commission Resolution R 10-2019 MUD. Mr. Gaynor.
Yes, this is the one that was discussed a little earlier about we having, we would have the final say on any plans or development that takes place in the golf course area. That does give us oversight as to what type of businesses that are going in there. And that's exactly the reason why this is being done, because as Mr. Pfeifer stated, somebody could come in there and buy their property and resell it and, and not develop what they originally intended it to be developed as. So we wanted to have final say over what type of development went in there. You don't want a Walmart there, of course. You don't want a, some big chain store in there. So that's exactly the reason for this ordinance. And I would offer it.
Mr. Markey, will you...
Yeah, just if you set it for next Monday, I'll make sure to have the final ordinance that allows for that.
And then I can do the public hearing on September 9th.
Okay.
All right, so then, is there any further discussion regarding the, the Resolution 10-2019?
I would just like, Mr. McComber to repeat that loudly. We'll, we'll have the ordinance next week.
If the ordinance is ready next week, then I can have a public hearing on September 9th.
Okay.
At the second reading.
At the second reading. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Okay, then we just need a, a motion to add this to next Monday's agenda for a first reading.
I make that motion.
I'll second that.
A motion in a second to add the Planning Commission Resolution R 10-2019 for the mud to next Monday's agenda for a first reading. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Gaynor.
Yes.
Mr. Carrick.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Towesley.
Yes.
Ms. Whipke. Mr. Pilat.
Yes.
Mr. Kernan.
Yes.
Just a point of order.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Do we only need three votes on that?
That's what I was thinking.
I don't think it hurts, but just going forward.
Oh, yeah, that, I'm sorry.
Just the committee.
Committee of the Whole.
Yeah, just the committee, I'm sorry. But the three committee members voted yes, so it's, it's good. All right. Sorry about that. Take a month off and I get all out of practice.
I know.
Water and sewer petition for Wadsworth Road. My understanding is, is that we've received a petition, request, actually, we received two petitions, two separate petitions, requesting water and sewer. A couple of questions that I had, the one that I think Ms. Nice-Winter got the signatures for indicates that they're expressing their interest, but not, they're not obviously binding themselves to anything. And so my concern is, if we expend money to do a study, which we would have to do, to find out what the assessments would be and what the cost would, would be, where's that money come from?
Right. So I, I think there's probably a chicken, it happens a lot in assessment projects, there's a chicken and egg problem. And the residents don't want, the property owners don't want to commit themselves to spending unlimited amounts of money to figure out this problem. And then the city doesn't want to expend the money without a way to recoup it. So we were talking about this earlier, Robert and, Mr. Fowler and I, and, you know, maybe there's a way to get an estimate of how much it would cost, just to get a rough cost of putting in this water and sewer line.
Okay.
Not back-of-the-napkin kind of thing, so that the property owners would know, okay, it's not to exceed whatever the amount is, a smaller, much smaller amount than the full engineering, but then the council's protected as well.
Yeah, I mean, I...
It would probably help move it forward. As you mentioned, this petition is not, our form is probably not what we would consider legally sufficient to move forward.
Okay.
But I understand the concern, which is, I can't tell you, you can discharge my property wherever you want.
Right. So are, are we able then, with this petition in this form, to go ahead and, and get some type of a, of a rough estimate? I mean, are we legally able to do that?
Well, I think what we would do is, and I don't, well, I want Mr. Fowler to speak, but how he wants to proceed, since I'm just the lawyer.
So I would say if we are patient, if we are patient, we already have authorized a contract to do the survey work, so I can get the survey work done.
Okay. Okay.
Then I could get a rough idea of what the cost would be without much money being expended. So just to be clear, we received the money from the highway PA to do the Wadsworth-Barberton-Norton-Acrin interconnect.
Right.
That interconnect falls on State Route 261.
Okay.
So the engineering has been approved for that. So part of that is survey work. And my intention was to do that survey work for both water and, I mean, when you do survey work, you'll be able to put it in for water and sewer. So then they wouldn't have to pay for that work because it's part of a larger project. And then I could come back with some reasonable, you know, a reasonable idea.
Right.
I mean, I'll just give you an example. The problem is, we bid Cleveland-Masslin Road north in March, April. It came back too high and we couldn't award it. So we had to go back and rebid it. It's just the danger of the climate we're in currently that I can give you an estimate, but I am concerned with the accuracy at this point without us having true actual bids.
Okay. And when you say if we're patient, I'm sure the question is, is how much patience do we need?
So I know they've started some of that project. I would ask them to survey that next.
Okay.
But it's going to need a little bit of, like, a few weeks to get the other traffic out of the intersection.
If I could.
Mr. Gainer.
The way I understand it, there was, what was it, four signatures on the petition? So do we know exactly how many foot of sewer and water would be required for those four businesses? I don't think we do. So I would suggest that we know those footages before anything is even considered.
Well, that's what the survey will tell us, right?
I understand.
That's, the whole purpose of that would be to identify the connection of the sewer, where it's going to go in, and then it will tell us, is it deep enough? You know, those things that we'll have to go through to make sure.
Any other discussion? Diane, did you...
Let me finish my thought.
Sure.
What I was talking about though, Robert, was if, for an example, this study didn't come through for any time soon, and those individuals that had the business wanted to go ahead with that project, if we knew the footage involved just for their project, then if we decided to come up with a way to pay for the estimate on just their section of that project for sewer and water, since the sewer and water is there at the corner, I would suggest that we have that footage available and make certain that those are the four people instead of six. Maybe the next person up the line would be involved. But to get the exact amount that we should be considering for an estimate, if by chance we don't have that estimate in, say, a month or two months or three months, or whatever the time period might be, they might want to go ahead and consider helping to pay for an estimate or something because there will be costs involved for them anyway. So maybe it could be considered or discussed about their costs for the estimate included. Because you're right, the city can't afford just to willy-nilly pay for estimates for sewer lines and water lines. But if we knew exactly how much, maybe possibly, we could come up with a plan if by chance we don't get those estimates.
Any further discussion? Diane, come on up. Name an address again, please, and speak up.
Diane Nice Winter. My business is at 3120 Wadsworth Road. We are open to sharing with expenses. You know, we are reasonable businesses with reasonable budgets, and it's just something that we really need over in that area because of just the lack of sewer capacity out there and old systems. So we're open for discussions on anything. And, you know, we want to work with the city, you know, to do this because it benefits, I think, everybody. There are more people in the area that are interested. The other business next to me, the decking place, they are interested. They're just having a little problem with the petitions, and I just wanted to get the petition in. So, and residents are also interested. So if you, you know, if we get a little further, I can take care of getting interest from, you know, more people in the area because it is there.
Okay.
If that helps at all.
Great. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else on that? So we're gonna, I guess we'll just let this ride for right now until we get some more information. We'll just keep it on the matters referred.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Letter D, Council Rules Amendments. That was brought forward by me. Based upon the discussion at the last meeting, it doesn't sound like there's a whole lot of support to do that. So I will, at this time, withdraw those amendments. And we'll take care of any amendments to rules if we're going to do them at the beginning of next year. Letter E, Modifying Truck Route Designations. Mr. Karen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance number 92 2019. Now, we don't need to read it at this time, correct?
Correct, yeah. We're just discussing it.
It's my understanding of what we're trying to do with this is to add to the existing 11 truck routes that are designated in our city. The area from Eastern Road, Farland Road to City Corporation Limit is the only change that we would have the weight-bearing capacity up through the city that they could legally take the trucks to take care of their product. And this is entirely to do with the land that's being developed or planning developed. I guess I should ask if there's anything I'm missing there.
No, it's...
Pretty straightforward, I think.
I noticed Eastern Road isn't, Charlotte pointed this out, Eastern Road is not on that list.
It says Farland from Eastern, but it doesn't say Eastern.
Right. I, it was just curious to me that with 21 right down there, that...
But it doesn't exit the other way.
We're gonna, we're gonna want Eastern Road added to that list. That was an oversight.
I, okay. I thought maybe it might be so.
So we're going to change that?
Yeah, I would, well, I would have Eastern Road from Farland to Corporate Limit West is what I would add to that ordinance, and I could do that for next week's meeting.
Okay.
I do have one question, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Towesley?
Just for my own curiosity, our ordinances such as this, do they make a difference when we go for funding, or does that not matter?
Mr. Fowler, I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know the answer. I would assume that it would, if it's, I mean, where it matters is it a federally designated route? That would then qualify for federal funds. I will ask Josh about the truck route. I'm sure to get ODOT money, it needs to be a truck route.
Thank you.
So we'll be, we'll be adding Eastern Road onto there. Any other discussion or...
I think with that addition, with that modification, should we go ahead and move that, may I move that to next week's agenda?
Okay. Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
The clerk call the roll.
Mr. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Budget appropriations and transfer approval. Ms. Whipke?
Thank you, Mr. President. Because I understand that we're looking to move some funds around again in anticipation of doing the work on the Loyal Oak area, Cleveland-Masslin Road, and Worcester Road resurfacing and the Johnson Road project for the various improvements.
Can you speak up?
Where is the serp? We're looking to move some funds around to take care of the Cleveland-Masslin Road-Loyal Oak area and Worcester Road resurfacing and the Johnson Road project as well as for the Service Department. I thought, are these all for this year or is this for 220 as well? I thought Worcester Road was for next year.
It's for the engineering.
For the engineering.
For next year's resurfacing.
And the Johnson Road, we all know that that needs taken care of. Is this going to be covering East and West Johnson Road? Because I know on tonight's agenda we've got...
It's from the intersection of Haimtown West towards Medina Line.
Okay. This one is. And then we're looking at, eventually we're looking at getting all of Johnson Dunn though, correct?
Correct. There's another request for AMAT's funding where we would...
That's for the eastern end.
Correct. Would be the eastern portion of Johnson. We're asking for approval to seek grant funding to do that project.
So at this time, I make a motion to add ordinance 93, council's next agenda, and looking to waive the second and third readings with emergency language.
I'll second.
There's a motion in the second to add ordinance 93 2019 to the next agenda. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Letter G, AMAT's grant request. Ms. Whipke?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I kind of just covered this a little bit for ordinance 94 2019, that we're looking to get some grant money to do the rest of Johnson Road going through the Barberton limits. Do we need to look to waive readings on any of this, or we have a timeframe that we still get to fit into?
Yes, we need to expedite that, unfortunately.
So we need to waive the readings as well?
Yes.
So emergency language, do we need to include the emergency language? Because I don't think it's on there right now. Is it?
Yes.
Is it?
It's not on there.
It's not on here. Only because the grant deadline is in September, so I would rather get it approved and get it on.
So what I'm going to be doing is looking to move this onto our next agenda with the emergency language in, add it, and looking to waive the second and third readings on ordinance 94 2019.
I'll second.
There's a motion in the second to add 94 2019, including emergency language, onto the next agenda. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Letter H, Johnson Road Reconstruction. Ms. Whipke?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is ordinance 95 2019. I'm going to ask for a little bit of clarity again here from Mr. Fowler. This is for the eastern end, or the western end?
Western. So if you recall, when we did the annual paving project, I came to you and said, when we did Haimtown, there was a pocket of money that was available through the county engineer's office.
Right.
To do Haimtown. So we, what I told you is, we would apply for that $200,000. We would take that $200,000 and put it towards Johnson before the end of the year so that we could repair that portion that is really rough. But we had to wait till that project was done and subsequently rebid it, and the low bidder was Superior Asphalt.
And again, we're going to be looking to waive the second and third readings with emergency language?
Yes, because I need to get the contract awarded so they can try to have it done before the end of the construction season.
This time I make a motion to add ordinance 95 2019 to council's next agenda, looking to waive second and third readings with emergency language.
I'll second.
Motion is...
Mr. Fowler, any idea why the disparity between the bids there? I mean, Perrin's 333 and Superior 208.
Superior, I'm sorry, Superior asked me the same. My only assumption, and I don't know this, Superior has an asphalt plant. Perrin does not. So Perrin is at the whim of another company for them to buy their material for which they would install. So therefore Superior probably had a control over their asphalt prices better than the other company, is what.
So it wasn't a matter of different size of scope with the project, or...
No.
Okay.
Any further discussion? There's a motion to add ordinance number 95 2019 to the next agenda. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Letter I, Notice to Proceed, New Park Drive. Ms. Whipke?
Thank you, Mr. President. Now on this one, I'm going to need some help between the next, this one and the next one. This is the notice to proceed with the New Park Drive project, and that would include fixing the road as well as the water issues.
The project is more than just road reconstruction, but the primary focus of it is road reconstruction, elevation, and then implementing some stormwater improvements that will change the direction of outflows. And with the Barberton property designated, or donation, we will designate that as an outfall for us to put some storage for stormwater.
When you say an outfall, it's going to be like a retention fund?
Well, it's just going to be a holding area where it dumps rather than in the road. Remember how it accumulated in the road? So we're going to elevate the road now, and the water's going to have to have somewhere to go. So Barberton has donated that property, and we're going to put the outfall there.
Outfall is just the end of the storm sewer pipe where the water comes out of.
And also, and not to really change the subject, but since it is part of the subject, I know that they had an issue with the assessment that was on there for that piece of property.
Barberton?
Yes.
Yeah, so I talked to the finance director earlier today, and they just want to make sure. He was confused because he received the notice of the Assessment Equalization Board hearing and the opportunity to object, and he just wanted to make sure that Barberton wasn't being charged for the assessment since they're going to be transferring the property to the city of Norton.
Yeah, and it would be...
So I explained to him that they would not be. It goes with the property, and that's going to be transferred to Norton.
And then being a city property, there really doesn't be anything there anywhere.
Well, you could charge city property. You could...
Barberton, we could charge.
We could, we could charge Barberton if we wanted to, but...
But since we're getting it.
Since they're transferring the property, we're not going to be charging them for the assessment.
And I take it we're looking to move this along so that we can get started and hopefully get something taken care of.
Yes. So before the end of construction season.
Right. At this time, I make a motion...
Hold on just a second. Mr. Sims?
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to tell you that we have no objection to what's being proposed. Our objection is to who's paying for what's being proposed. Last week, we had, I was at the Equalization Board, and we had a very, very, very lengthy discussion on what would be the fairest way to judge the benefit received. And after some discussion, it was recommended that we went from frontage over to assess value of the land. At the same time, we also raised the issue that the very resolution, it's Section 3 of the resolution specifically calls the fact that we have to determine it based on what the benefit received is. And we were questioning that. There was a second motion that was not granted at that point in time. But last week, the entire discussion centered around the flooding in the sewers. We pointed out that the Barber Road doesn't flood on, doesn't flood on our side of the street because we're on the higher end of the street, and that once communal was taken care of, that would solve the problem. And since the last meeting, I've learned that from my perspective, the entire project is really much for the benefit of communal. I have a press release from the TID and from Summit County. Both are identical as it relates to the project, and there's no mention of flooding, sewers, curbs, aprons, or anything whatsoever. And I'm going to read that into the record, and then I'll go on to one other thing. This says, "In Norton, $200,000 will be used for the benefit of New Park Drive reconstruction. This project will provide an improved, safer, more durable road surface for heavy trucks and traffic entering and exiting the Interstate Park. The project will allow the headquarters' operations of SA Communal, the largest employer in the city, to expand. The existing road service cannot withstand the expected increase in truck traffic and new employee growth making an improved roadway essential to retaining and adding additional jobs to the current locations." That's the most important part. That is, that's in the TID release, and that's in the engineering release from the... That is, that's in the TID release, and that's in the engineering release from the Summit County. Now, going one step further, and the clerk has all of these documents for you, by the way, there is actually the application for the funding. And again, I want to read you the pertinent part of the application. "The Newport Drive reconstruction project will provide a better, safer, more durable road surface for heavy trucks and traffic entering and exiting the interstate industrial park. The project will allow for the ability to expand the headquarters' operation of SA Communal, a $400 million corporation and the largest employer in the city of Norton. This project will facilitate operation of this business in their current location. SA Communal has 500 employees currently at the Norton headquarters. They project adding another 210 employees to the larger site over the next five years as they develop and expand the fire suppression business. Manufacturing employees make between $37 and $60 an hour, which includes benefits." Currently, communal ships, and it goes on and on and on. It says absolutely nothing about sewer, about curbs, about anything. It's quite clear that this entire thing is for the benefit of communal. Now, there is also an attachment, and again, the clerk has this, and I'm not going to read it, is a letter to Mr. Fowler from the president of communal, which tells us all the wonderful things communal is going to do, which is great and is wonderful. It's great for the city, it's great for profitability, but it's not the burden of the adjacent property owners to have to pay for this. So the $295,000, which is the total assessments that's being redone, we believe should not be on any of us, but it should all be on communal. I think that pretty much summarizes what I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion?
Not always.
Okay.
At this time, I make a motion to add ordinance 96, 2019, to council's next agenda, waiving second, third readings with emergency language.
I'll second.
Motion to second, add ordinance 96 to the next agenda. Clerk call the roll, please.
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes. Letter J, New Park Drive reconstruction. Ms. Whipke.
As I understand it, this is actually for doing the work itself, and we're having OPWCO. dot TID funding and assessments involved in paying on this?
That's correct. And we are still trying to acquire more grant funds, and just a reminder that the assessments can't be any higher. Provided we get further grant funding, we would look to reduce those assessments going forward.
Just like we did for the residential-
Correct.
They can't go higher than what we've been shown here on the resume.
Than what's there. Correct. But yes, we anticipate possibly some more grant funding for this project.
Okay, well, I guess I have a question, because as I understand it, this is Barberton storage that Mr. Sims was here representing, and, yes?
Yes.
And they're looking at the $65,188 on our ordinance, and then this report from the assessment board, they're talking $43,594. Does that have anything to do with what we're doing here tonight?
That was the last ordinance. Ms. Whipke, the ordinance proceed. So the way the ordinance is written is council's approving the assessment equalization board, which should include that recommendation to lower the assessment to that lower amount that you read.
So they've actually dropped from the 63, or 65 down to the 43?
Yeah, that's what assessment equalization board has recommended, and it's up to council to confirm that recommendation.
Could I ask, sorry if you don't mind, I interrupted you there. You said it was the last one. Are we sending the last ordinance forward with the $43,000 in, or is it still at 65?
As of now, it's 43 for that property. The lower amount, whatever.
So if we approve that, their assessment will be lowered to 43?
That's correct.
We've already moved it on, so.
Well, we have. I'm not in favor of that at all. I mean, I didn't realize in the last ordinance, I, just a couple of statements about Mr. Sims stated about his property or his client's property is on higher ground, so he doesn't feel that he has to pay for the flooding on the other side of the street. I take exception to that completely. In that case, people who are flooded in the Barberton area, anybody north of them, I guess you're saying you wouldn't expect them to pay for the flooding problem in the whole area, because they're, the people up north wouldn't have to pay for it, you're saying, because they're not being flooded, so they don't have any responsibility for the water running through their property?
What I'm saying very specifically is, in order to assess the property, there has to be, by statute in the state of Ohio and Jordan's, a benefit to the landlord. The way this is being done, there is no benefit to us. The entire benefit is going to communal. Now, we can disagree on that, but the point of this whole thing is, the city, and rightfully so, wants communal to grow, wants them to add employees, and we're family. We just don't feel we have to pay for their growth.
Mr. Sims, don't you think-
That's my, our point. There's no benefit to us.
All right. Mr. Markey?
Yeah, I think that, to Mr. Gainer's point, the argument, and Mr. Sims is entitled to make his argument, that there's no benefit being received by the property owner. The project is more than just flood remediation. It's a new roadway. It's storms. It's everything that comes along with that project. There is a benefit conferred on all the properties who front a roadway improvement. He can argue that one property benefits more than the other, and he's more than welcome to make that argument, but the fact is, there are benefits that are conferred to all the properties.
My next point was that, if I could, my next point was that, is if, 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 if communal itself, he's saying, is the only person there benefiting from this, I absolutely disagree with that. Communal has employees who rent your properties. They rent your storage units, and they wouldn't be renting them if they wasn't in this area. They wouldn't rent from you, or they wouldn't buy gasoline down here at this gas station. Everybody, everybody in this city, including the businessman that you're representing, is benefiting from the increase in employees going into communal's heating and air conditioning place, or whatever they call it now, and including your properties, your clients' properties, is also benefiting enormously from this. Your properties, how many employees are employed with your three storage units? Well, I'm just guessing, 10, 20 maybe? I'm saying, even if it's 25, the benefits from those 25 employees do not nearly, not nearly, and I'm not saying they're not important, because they are. Don't misunderstand me. I understand all businesses are important. Every last one of them, it comes to the city, even if it has one employee. But to say that you're not benefiting from a nice new road in your property, and you're never going to flood, because you've already said you're on the high ground, so the flooding has nothing to do with your property. It's a benefit of the road, the curbs, anything that goes in there, your client is going to benefit from it. And in my own opinion, if the dollar amount that was arrived at by the breakdown of the costs and everything, if that amount was $65,000 to your clients, then that's the amount they should pay. That's my opinion.
I really disagree with you, but the one thing that you're forgetting is the grant did not, was not for that, what you're asking. The TID grant was for everything but that. It makes no mention of storms, sewers, or anything. It's purely to improve the road, and why? So communal can buy the property next door, so communal can add to their employees, and so the city can profit. That's great.
Mr. Fowler?
Let's clarify one thing. In order to receive the $200,000 in TID money, you had to show specific job growth expectation. So without communal, they would have been paying part of that $200,000. So for him to stand here and say that they got no benefit out of this, it's really, it's not correct. So because of communal's expansion, we were able to acquire that additional $200,000 in grant funding.
So what you're saying is, is the reason that there's so much discussion of communal in the, in the grant applications, because you had to show the job growth-
Correct. In order to justify the grant funding.
But there is, in fact, other benefits, other than the road. There's flood mitigation, and it seems to me that any property where the road and the sewers and the curbs are improved, is going to increase in value by the mere fact that that is there.
And they have, I'm sorry, Justin, and they have access to their property off of New Park Drive. So if they didn't have access, we could eliminate that. Then they could argue, could make his argument, that he's not benefiting. But they clearly have two points of egress to his property off of New Park Drive.
I'd like to add one more thing on a personal basis, since we do rent from that property. There have been times that it has rained excessively, flooded. The road has been in very poor shape, and we have not been able to answer the state board of pharmacy for my business, because we could not get into your property that you represent.
And I understand that that's because of the, and you're going to have to correct me, Mr. Engineer, because I'm not familiar. From what I'm told, communal, by having built up the barriers they build, have built on the side, whenever it rains hard, the water floods right out of communal and onto the road, which is against, which is against the ordinances to start with, and nobody's ever done anything about that. So it's not because your egress wasn't stopped because of the road flooding, but because communal is dumping their water on you.
Nonetheless, it is, it's still impossible to get to that facility to use the storage.
So, all of this aside, right, there's a legal definition of benefit, right? That's different than probably what we're all talking about in terms of benefit. And that benefit has to be something that can confer the value of the assessment. Everyone who has access to the road has equal benefit within the roadway as determined by council. So because the legal and, I guess, common usage of benefit are, get a little confused, I would recommend we don't talk too much more about benefit.
Right.
Let the ordinance and the resolution speak for themselves.
Okay.
And obviously, allow Mr. Sims to talk, but move on.
Okay.
Were you questioned for you? You were going to schedule this for a full council hearing next week, is that correct?
This will be on, for its first reading, on council's agenda next week.
And when is the voting on it, then? We're looking to vote next week.
Yeah, I think we're looking to vote on it next week.
When we have an opportunity to present our side-
There's always public comments at the council meetings, not at the time of the ordinance, but in the public comment section.
Thank you. So I'll see you all next week.
Okay.
Mr. Sims, I'd just like to point out that due to the conversations had here, and the fact that we are no longer confused as to what these ordinances actually are and what they maintain, it would be even possible that that $43,000 could go away, and it goes back up to the 60. Just to-
I wouldn't like to see that, but you have to do what you think is right.
I just wanted to forewarn you that that is a possibility, listening to what I've heard here tonight.
I appreciate your concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Towesley?
I have a question that has nothing to do with everything we just talked about.
Okay.
All the way back to the beginning of the conversation.
Okay.
We spoke about an outfall, and I just want to make sure that engineers have looked at this, and where the outfall is lower than Barber Road, so it's not just going to fall there and then just come right back.
Jim Dembowski, who has done ample work out there, I would argue, has reviewed that and is trying to make it so that it helps alleviate. So part of the problem is, a lot of the Barber Road trunk line runs down through that property, and the 42-inch actually is what's causing the backup. It's actually another issue. But it should, according to Mr. Dembowski, resolve that issue. Plus, we're raising the elevation of the road several inches.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
And that property actually runs right into the canal, or whatever it is you want to call it, does it not?
The trunk, and there was, and again, I wasn't here, so I'm trying to understand what Jim explained to me. Pardon me, council voted, or somebody authorized a duck bill, which shuts when other water hits it, some kind of valve. I'm sorry, I'm uninformed on this matter. But, so apparently, that's still there, but the water that's coming down then doesn't have anywhere to go, because the duck bill's closed. So there's a host of issues that, as to why that water comes out there.
So this may help?
It will help. It will help. Well, not may, it will. According to Jim Dembowski, it will help.
Okay, so if nobody else has anything, and I understand this is, we're accepting a bid from LaBerta. Is that how we think it is? Did you notice that will work? This time, I make a motion to add ordinance 97, 2019, to council's next agenda, waiving second and third readings, and looking at emergency language.
I'll second.
Motion to second to add the ordinance to next week's agenda for a first reading. Would clerk call the roll, please?
Ms. Whipke?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes. Letter K, Parks Master Plan. This is out of my committee. This is in response. We had a discussion earlier this year about some lighting down in the, in the park, and it was suggested, I think, by council that we maybe come up with some type of a master plan regarding park improvement and things of that nature. This is a contract to get that master plan underway. Anything else, Mr. Fowler, Mr. Markey? Any discussion?
Mr. Kernan, I do have a question.
Sure, Mr. Towesley.
I realize that parks have a reflection on the community and increase home value, so finding out what we need for parks is probably not a bad idea. The question I do have is, we are looking to hire this advisory group. Did we look into any other advisory groups, or was this our only option?
So we did an RFQ, and just so you are aware, OHM submitted, they have just recently, and I apologize, it's Twinsburg or Streetsboro or one of those communities, just recently had completed their master plan, which was kind of the example we used, where they held public meetings, they talked to different sports associations, and got the feedback from them and developed the master plan. We chose them based on that experience in the county.
Okay.
And I'd be glad to share, I think we have a copy of that. I would be glad to get that to all of council.
Right. And it is, just to note, you kind of made me think of it, there's several different public meetings involved in the process.
And just to be clear, it's for all the parks, but the idea is, we should understand and have a plan. If we're, we talk about grant funding. In order to start acquiring grant funding, we need a plan to try to understand what the constituents want. And you're correct, a park is kind of a level indicator of our community, right? It's important. So we thought that this would be a way for us to come up with a plan, identify grant funding, go after that grant funding, and make some improvements that our constituency recommends.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, and I will make a motion then to add ordinance number 98 to council's next agenda for a first reading.
I will second.
Motion to second to add ordinance 98, 2019. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
Asset disposal list, that's also under my committee. We have some property, some vehicles, other property that the city needs to get rid of. We do this, seems to me, about every year, every couple of years, anyway. And there was a list of the assets that was attached to the ordinance. Any discussion regarding that? I see we've got some things that are going to be scrapped, just because they're, we've got a vehicle here from 1994 vehicle, and then some things are going to be auctioned. So any, having no discussion then, I'll move to add ordinance, Mr. Pilat.
Sorry. The miscellaneous collection of bikes. I know there's a program within an Akron that takes bikes, they recondition them, and then they give them to the needy. I don't know if, maybe we want to look into that. I don't know the shape of these bikes or the condition, but if there was anything worthwhile, I thought it might be a good idea to donate them, rather than put them into the scrap pile.
I asked that same question, Mr. Pilat, and from what I understand, a lot of them are rusted through. They're in pretty tough shape. We've had them for- We've had them for, for, apparently for years. They've sat outside most of the time, so they're pretty much just pile up scrap.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Kernan, I do have another question.
Yes, Mr. Towesley.
Um, the paperwork says the items for auction will be placed on the city website for a silent bid. Is that the only place it's going to be advertised and do we know when that is and how long it runs and so on, just for public information?
I, I think we're indicating that as soon as council approves, we'll put them up probably for two weeks on, on, and indicate the parameters there. It's pretty much like what we've done in the past when we sold the boat and different pieces, the mowers last year. People can put in a silent bid by the date and time specified and then on that date, we'll have an opening and the highest bidder will get notified and pay and pick up...
And all of that will be through the website?
That's the only place I know to do it.
Okay, I just want to get it out there, the more bidders, the better, obviously.
Sure, yeah.
Any further discussion? All right, I move to add ordinance number ninety-nine, twenty nineteen, to council's next agenda, waiving the second and third readings. Is there emergency language on that to get it going?
Yes.
Do you need emergency language, Mr. Mr. Mr.?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure we get it.
All right, with emergency language?
Yeah.
All right. Need a second?
I'll second, sorry.
Have a motion in the second then to add that to next, next agenda. With clerk call the roll, please.
Mr. Kernan?
Yes.
Mr. Towesley?
Yes.
Mr. Gainer?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else to come before committee of the whole? Any topics for our next work session? All right, in that case, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Aye, we're adjourned.